Call the, do the, call the order. Meeting of the Lyon Township zoning, they're not zoning, but Planning Commission is hereby in session. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yep.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay.
Okay, and you wanna go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tim and get things going on.
As the Lyon Township Board Representative for the Planning Commission of Lyon Township, I'd ask for a motion that I will be temporary moderator this evening until such a time that we appoint a chair who will take over that role. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's do a roll call. Dan Richardson.
Here.
Timothy Monet here, Steve Reedy absent, Fred Cowper, I think is how you pronounce his name, Cowper?
So, yeah.
Yep, absent, and how do you pronounce your last name?
Tagmire.
Roger?
Roger.
Roger Tagmire.
Okay, there you go.
Second T's silent.
Okay.
It's a tough one.
What was that?
I don't know.
You're gonna get lucky if something fall on me.
Oh my God. All right, so this evening, one of the first things we're going to do is we need to make a determination of the Planning Commission officers, the chair and secretary. And we do have a quorum here this evening, so we can commence with those determinations. At this point in time, I guess I would ask, you know, you gentlemen as well, what are your thoughts?
Well, me being an alternate, I don't think I'm, would be, I don't think I'd wanna be chairman or secretary. I don't know about your thoughts.
I don't particularly want to be chairman.
Okay.
I wanna see how things go for the next year and with the Planning Commission and its working relationship with the board, the admin board. And so, I do not want to volunteer to be chairman.
Sure. Well, and is not put any of the other gentlemen on the hook, so to speak, then I'll make a motion at this time that we table selecting a chair at this time. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we have to choose a secretary. And I am definitely volunteering to do that. I like taking notes. I think I'm pretty good at it and, yeah, so.
I'll make a motion that Tim be elected the secretary.
I second that.
Okay. I guess I don't need to third it. Okay, so we have a motion. We had some discussion, well, short but sweet. All those in favor of appointing Timothy Monet Secretary of the Planning Commission for Lyon Township signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. All right, one of the first things after that we have to do, we have to approve the last minutes that were entered on the webpage on February 5th of 2024. I have, I haven't seen them personally. I don't know if you gentlemen or if you Dan.
I looked them up.
Did you? Yeah, I scanned, I skimmed through them. I've not, you know.
Well, and this, this is when I wish Ron were here because I look back through my notes and we had a meeting on February 5th and we had meeting minutes there and they were approved at the meeting of May 6th.
Okay.
Then the May 6th meeting minutes were approved on the meeting of September 9th.
The end of your meeting. Would that be the end of your meeting, the September 9th one, I believe?
No, because we had one more meeting on September 9th.
Okay.
And minutes were approved from that. The minutes of 9/9 were approved on 10/21. But I do not have a copy of those meeting minutes. I don't know what happened and if.
I might.
Yep.
Ron said he did them and he submitted them. It appeared that the township never got them on the website.
Yeah.
And I have not found them here anywhere.
So, so as far as I know, there were meeting minutes made from both May 6th and September 9th and they were, those meeting minutes were all approved at the following meeting. And, but as far as getting them on the website and all that, that, that was Ron and, and the staff.
Okay.
So I don't know where they are.
So I, it's safe to say then, then the approval of minutes have already, it's already taken place last year up to that point, so.
Now, we had a meeting on October 21st and I never got a copy of the draft of those because we, we had one more meeting, the December 2nd meeting, but that was just you and me.
Yes.
So Ron did.
Which wasn't really a meeting because we didn't have a quorum.
Wasn't official meeting because we didn't have a quorum. So as far as the meeting minutes from October 21st, I, I have never seen them, the draft.
Sure.
And we never approved them.
All right, so then I think it would make sense that this time, until we can get further clarification from Ron and or something in the archives, that we also table approving the minutes from the last meeting that would be on record at that time of October 21st of 20, or 2025.
Correct.
All right.
No, October 21st, 2024.
Oh, 24, gosh, yeah, we haven't had.
24.
We're not there yet.
Yes, thank you, okay, correction.
I know you like to go fast.
We don't like to start over with already.
Wow, I even wrote 25. That's funny. All right, I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all those in favor of tabling the minutes, or tabling the acceptance, approval of the minutes from the October 21st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. All right. Oh, I wanted to make one more clarification before we go on to agenda items, that this is not a public hearing, as stated in our agenda. This is just, I mean, the public hearing will be coming.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so on the agenda, we have number one for this evening, approval of the Planning Commission 2025 meeting dates. I personally do not have those meeting dates in front of me. Do you?
I, I.
I can tell you.
Yeah, you, we approved them. I don't know where they are in my.
Who, who approved them? Because normally we do that at the plant, the first Planning Commission meeting of the year. We determine our dates and.
Sure, that's sure.
That was something that we did as the board because we had to submit the dates to the newspaper before the end of March, before March 31st. So we set four days because it's mandatory for four. Everything else is whatever you guys decide. Dates, because we, a combination of crazy things, the next one is next week.
Next week?
On the 21st, I believe.
I thought I saw that, 21st of April.
Right, and then the other two, because we set four, we need the mandate, that was all. The other two are, one's in August and one's in October. So the assumption was you guys would take over and if you want to schedule more meetings, add it.
Okay.
You know, it is what it is right now. The next, the scheduled one is next Monday.
Well, does everybody know about the 21st?
Everybody, as far as the notification for when the board approved them, but if you hadn't looked at that, then it's coming to you now.
Okay.
And you certainly have the right to change it. Do it, I mean, yeah.
What, what is the August and October date? Like I said, it's in my notes here, but do you have that?
I don't know the.
Okay, that's fine, we have. So, yeah, what would you gentlemen like to do? I mean, we can certainly, I'm not so sure Monday after Easter, just because it's Easter week and not because, so much because of Easter, but just because we'd also wanna make sure that people are gonna be here and participate, I would assume as well. So it's less than a week away, so thoughts on that?
I know I can't make it on the 21st.
All right, so let's look at the calendar here. We all can, of course.
Yeah, I'll butt in one more time. We were just trying to meet the mandate of the four days before the 31st. And then things started out.
What's the next Monday?
What do your schedules look like? Mine, I'm usually, every Wednesdays are free for me, Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, always off, always a free after 5:00, so.
In, in the past, we've always had them on Mondays.
Sure.
Now, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
That worked out for most people, so.
What about Monday the 28th then? Give us an excuse that we can have, or is that still too soon, do you think?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with the 28th.
28th?
Let's make it the 28th and by that time, Ron should be here.
Okay.
I don't know about the other folks.
All right, so do we wanna leave for right now? Because I have a funny feeling with the items on our agenda, we're gonna have to, like, we're gonna have to meet more anyway. I mean, you know, this April to August isn't gonna work because we have some things to work on with the animal ordinance and other stuff, so for the sake of argument, if this is the four dates, today's meeting, April 28th, the Augs and October 1, we can change that as needed. I mean, there's no reason.
Yeah, I think we can get the dates solidified like Dan said on the 28th.
Okay, yeah, yeah, all right.
Participate.
Yep. All right, then I guess I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting dates as presented right now for April, April 28th, 7:00 PM.
Okay.
April 28th, 7:00 PM.
Okay. And then we'll also accept at this point in time, the August and October Planning Commission dates for 2025 until further notice.
Although we don't know what those are.
No, they are. Yeah, oh my gosh.
They're on the website, I follow them, yeah.
Oh, are they on the website?
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
Okay.
I got them. It is August 4th and October 6th.
Yeah, I did see them.
And we certainly have the right to change those.
Yeah. Okay, that is a Monday, August 4th and October 6th. Those are both Mondays, okay.
All right, so I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Where are we at here? Okay, any more discussion? At this time? Any more discussion at this time?
No.
All right, all those in favor of approving those dates signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, number two. Planning Commission's been asked to look at the Animal Ordinance Number 35, which deals with, oh, well, it's exactly what I'd say is the Animal Ordinance. And with amending it to include backyard chickens in R1 residential districts. So, at this point in time, our first order of business, let me get this off because it's making too much noise. Okay. All right, so it'll be up to us to propose a draft to the township and make a recommendation what we believe the zoning amendment should say and how it should say. We have been given a rough draft of the purpose and intent from the township, but this is not per se law yet. This is just a guideline of their wishes, but obviously no means legal binding whatsoever. Because it's our job to come up with the recommendations and forward that to the board.
Okay, and to be clear, we, are we going to change, I mean, the ordinance or is it the board approves ordinance? Which, because I, I thought that the Planning Commission, if it's a zoning issue, the Planning Commission is the one that approves it, not the board.
No, actually it's not. So what happens is under the zoning enabling act, is that the Planning Commission comes together and puts together recommendations. Those recommendations at that point in time, once it's agreed upon as by a majority, sends that off to the board. The board at that point has the right to approve or disapprove that order at that time. If they approve, it moves forward as such. It goes to the attorney and is sent on to the county planning commission, which no longer exists. It'll just go to the Board of Commissioners for review if they choose. They have the right to pass a resolution to not review it. It'll immediately come back to Lyon Township for final approval. If it is, if there is changes that are desired by the Township Board, they have that right to send it back to us for review and to alter some things once again, and we start that process back and forth. But final say does come down to the board.
Okay.
We are a recommendation committee.
Okay, I wanna be clear then. So we would, we would approve a recommendation.
Absolutely.
And then they would
Yep.
act upon that recommendation, either approving it, disapproving it, or making, sending it back to the Planning Commission for further modifications.
Exactly, yep, yep.
Okay.
And it's in this, I wanna make sure you guys, both, everyone that's on the Planning Commission gets a copy of this, exactly what the steps are, because it's really, really, with statutes, I mean, it just outlines everything and anything you'd ever wanna know about the process. Because I always thought so too, that the Planning Commission approves it.
You can email me, that'd be perfect.
Oh, can I make paper copies?
Oh, sure.
That's fine. I'm kinda rough with emailing. I have to take pictures, edit it and then get it into this thing, so.
Okay.
So this time, I'd like to, at the very least, ask for a motion to open up the discussion on amending ordinance 35 with the addition of language the Township Board voted to include, which is not legal binding, just a perspective from their point of view. Do I have that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that will open up for discussion.
I'll second that.
Second it. Okay. All right, so does everyone have a copy of the proposed
Draft?
Draft from the township?
Yeah.
Okay. So obviously the big items would be, is item D, allowing backyard chickens means chickens that are housed in a single-family residential district, R1 residential of less than two acres. So, who wants to start?
Well, I did do some research and I think there's just a few things we have to change to protect the owner, the neighbors and the township from getting numerous calls about chickens running around in their, their yard.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you mind if I read through what they're, because I haven't highlighted, what they want, what the changes are first and we'll go from there?
You can, yeah.
I mean, we can all read, but just for the record.
Sure.
All right. So the proposed amendment would be an item D that backyard chickens may be possessed in Lyon Township, single-family residential district, R1, but only if all the following conditions are met. Chickens shall always remain within a fully enclosed shelter with an optional covered fence enclosure in the rear yard. All enclosures shall be constructed or repaired to prevent rats, mice or other rodents from being harbored underneath within or within the walls of the enclosure. Provide a container that protects feet from entry by rodents. Be located a minimum of 10 feet from any property line and be located a minimum of 25 feet from any adjacent residential structures unless written permission has been obtained. Keep no more than eight chickens. No person shall keep any roosters. No person shall slaughter any chickens within public sight. No chicken shall be kept on parcels with more than one dwelling and properly dispose of chicken waste. Thank you, guys. So there, okay.
Well, line item one, we have optional covered fence. I think we should say a, we should have a covered fence instead of optional. And in the closure, line item two, I took some pictures of chicken coops and, you know, they should be up on stilts. So that road, you know, we're saying we don't build it where there's no rodents, but I think we should put in there, it has to be so many feet above the ground. Otherwise, if they're on the ground, you're gonna get rodents.
Yeah, I, when I first saw that too, one of my questions was at the board meeting is, well, how are you gonna keep rodents out, no matter what you're gonna do unless you dig a trench?
I mean, well, they're chickens, yeah.
Unless you dig a trench.
They breed rodents, coyotes and.
Yeah. Unless you put screen two, three feet in the ground, you're not keeping them out.
Yeah, and that's what I put down on mine, how? How are they gonna do that?
Right, right, okay. All right.
I had a couple other items that maybe we should add. Even if somebody has a fenced-in yard, I don't think we should let them, the chickens out of their coop area fenced in. In other words, you know, people might think, well, I have a fenced-in yard, I'm gonna let them run around. But I think we should put something in there, otherwise the neighbors are gonna complain and.
Yeah.
That's my opinion on that.
Real quick on that note, my concern may be, this was brought to my attention actually today, the legality of Michigan passing laws or otherwise that talk about cage-free animals and would it be?
I think if you, you put in this cage, like, the chickens can run around and they can go underneath.
Yeah. I'm not so sure that's cage-free though.
Yeah, I looked that up too, but if the cage-free is like if you have 3,000 hens or more.
Yeah. Being an animal lover, I mean, I will respectfully disagree with that because I think it's cruel to keep chickens locked up in a 10 by 10 enclosure with no other exercise. And to me, it would defeat the purpose if you had a fenced-in yard of them being able to eat ticks and this and that and so. But I understand, I definitely see what you're saying for sure, for sure.
But, but the 10, the number four there, be located a minimum of 10 feet from the property line, is that the coop or is that the, the, the chickens can't be, you know, or must be a minimum of 10 feet away from the property line?
Um.
See, I.
Yeah, that is vague and from my understanding, that would be the coop. Now personally, I think 10 feet's too close, but that's me. Whoa.
Yeah.
Oh, I like that. I have bad eyes, so that's better yet.
10 feet, yeah, you're probably right.
But this is why. So I pulled the ordinance from Traverse City and Richfield and both of theirs are like 25 or under 35 feet. And the reason I say this is because, and I'll just do a quick drawing. I was explaining this the other day to someone. So, camera, no kidding. If this is the property line and we say that, let's say a house is here, and a house is here, and we say, we want the chicken coop minimum 10 feet from the property line, but 25 feet from a residential dwelling. So here's my problem. These people over here, by setback laws under zoning, let's say that this is the fence line or a property line and they are 10 feet, they wanna take their home that's 25 feet away and now add an addition and they still stay 10 feet from the fence. Well, guess what? After you've done all that work to build something like that, because they have their rights to do that first before chickens would come into play, now you're no longer 25 feet away. But if you're 15 feet off the property line, 15 and the 10 to 25 from here, here, you're still then 25 feet if they wanna expand. Because I just firmly believe if certain things aren't in writing, people will make an issue of it. Whereas at 10 right now, if it's 10 feet off the property line, someone builds an addition and comes exactly 10 feet off the fence line, 10 feet to the line, 10 feet to the line, now they're only 20 feet and this person would have to move all their stuff. So if you just keep it at 15?
Well, either that person would have to move all their stuff or, or depending on how they would possibly say, well, you can't make your addition because there's this chicken coop there.
Oh, no, 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 no.
That wouldn't.
No, I would say that someone wanting to add an addition is gonna take precedence over a few chickens, but that's me.
I would hope.
So, especially from a tax base, you make money off of additions. You don't on a chicken coop. So, so I think that's something to be looked at too. I mean, that part of it makes sense to me. I just, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I definitely wanna be willing to compromise on that as, as we move forward and just look at some of this. Any thoughts on distances for you guys? Is 15 feet still close to a property line to you guys?
Well, also the state, like I said, this Senator DeSant, DeSant is proposing that you can only have five hens per quarter acre. In other words, you can't have anything,
Right.
Oh, you can't have a chicken coop unless it's a quarter acre of land, which is.
Chicken coop or the chickens?
Five hens per quarter acre.
Okay, so it's not the coop, it's the, it's the, it's the hens.
Right.
So we might as well go into item six, keep no more than eight chickens. I think eight's too many.
Right, that's what I was looking at. I don't know if you wanna stay at eight or.
I think it's too many, personally. I talked to people in Traverse City. I talked to other people who have kept chickens. If you're looking at chickens for sustainable purposes, everyone I've spoken to, farmers downstate even, I mean, four, even five hens is more than adequate to feed a family of five or six, all their eggs they could use, except for winter time when they're not laying eggs. But that's something we have to discuss. I just think eight is too many.
Well, eight is probably you're getting into, well, I'm raising the chickens for eggs for sale.
That's one of another things we should put in the, they can't sell.
Yeah, which is a business and that's in R1
Right.
Shouldn't be running businesses in R1.
That's another statement, which I had that down. We should have, we shouldn't allow anybody to sell.
Yeah. I, I think we need to reword number four a little bit to say that the, the enclosure or the chicken coop or something be located a minimum of 10 feet. Because it doesn't, it, you know.
It's vague.
It doesn't say what it, I, when I read through this, I thought, well, the fence enclosing the chickens would have to be 10 feet or more away from the property line. Because it doesn't say chicken coop.
No, no.
But only if the following conditions are met. Be located a minimum of 10 feet. Well, what be located?
Right.
The fence or the coop?
Yep, yeah, yeah, definitely. All right, yep. Definitely need to reword that to make it, like, I always believe if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist.
And then, and then before we go to six, I think that five needs to, some work on it too because it says unless written permission has been obtained. Well, is that written permission by the neighbor, by the board, by the Planning Commission?
Yep.
Who, you know, who has to sign off on that?
The zoning Board of Appeal?
Yeah.
I mean, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it should be too, also too, as far as, like you said, number four, what needs to be 25 feet from adjacent residential structures? The chickens themselves or the coop?
Correct.
So, just making it very, very clear and concise. I'm good with that.
And are you putting down the coop or are you putting down the fence?
Yeah, that's something we have to decide. Yeah, yep. Well, and it says, the chickens have to be located within 25, minimum of 25 feet from any adjacent residential structures unless written permission has been obtained. That, that's another whole caveat. To me, that meant, now everyone's gonna think this, that that meant the chicken coop. As I've looked at other townships, how they've written theirs, it is the coop because otherwise you'd be putting up another fence and why would you put a fence up 25 feet inside your property line? But I think the wording, it needs to be very, very clear. So people are like, oh, well, I'll just add another fence. You know what I mean? Because you can't do that. All right. That works. So it needs some work there. Enclosure pair prevents race. And this is all stuff that we're just gonna discuss tonight, obviously, and I want everyone to think about it as well and then kinda come, come up with some, you know, maybe we'll come up with some more finite choices when everyone's here as well to talk about some more.
Well, do you think, okay, are we gonna require a permit?
You know, I can't remember if it's Richfield or Traverse. Does require a permit.
The reason I'm saying that is so that kinda protects the neighbor a little bit, like, okay, can you give us, when you come in for the permit, we need to see. If you wanna construct it yourself, we need a little construct, just a drawing or if you're buying, this one here is $400 that Tractor Supply.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, so Richfield Township does.
I mean, there should be a permit where you got, you'd have to check it out after it was completed.
Mm-hmm.
I would say.
Yeah, so, this is what they put in Richfield, here's a good example, um, to your point about, you know, the wording. Uh, no covered enclosure or fenced enclosure shall be located closer than thirty feet to any property line of an adjacent property, that's, very clear, that means obviously the coop.
Right.
Read that again?
No covered enclosure or fenced enclosure shall be located closer than thirty feet to any property line of an adjacent property.
Yeah, that's pretty well over it.
Yeah, 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 exactly. And they allowed up to ten, and I'm not just saying this is like the end all because it isn't, but yeah, they have the permits in here too, um. So there is something else, as long as we're talking about location, 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 um, and to some it's an issue, to some it isn't, but I think it's worth us as a commission to look at. They have in theirs and other municipalities in Michigan do the same thing. Um, I'll read it first. A person shall not keep chickens in any location on the property within fifty feet of any lake, pond, well, spring, stream, drainage ditch, or drain. Now, I did a lot of research, talking to people at Michigan State University, uh, Oregon State, Washington State, and the reason was, and it may be negligible, but in the, the, the mood in our communities as of late, the idea that even if they're disposed of properly, properly, the reason, I'm understanding this is because when chicken poop breaks down, creates ammonia, there's nitrates, this, this, and this, so, they put this in to make sure that it would be negligible, the idea of any nitrates or nitrates going into, any body of water, especially with the way things are around here lately. Thoughts?
But that said, within fifty, was it fifty feet of a well?
Well, just like your septic has the isolation distances.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Um.
Whoa.
It's just something to think about, we're not making any decisions.
That's something to think about too, yeah.
Yep, because the last thing we'd want, I mean, it probably wouldn't happen, cause you know they're more vacationers, but I thought about this once again, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. I would hate to think that there's chickens so close to the lake anywhere.
Yeah.
And, next thing you know, there's a hard rain, and now we're getting all sorts of complaints that, that's running right into the water.
Sure.
So, I just think it's, I mean, maybe negligible, and it probably is, but I just think it's something, something to talk about.
You've got a good point about a well.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I think it's good.
Yeah.
But, but that's gonna, I think that's gonna make it difficult for, for people, some, you know, some people, to, to find a, a place on their property to put it that is not within fifty feet of their well.
So, I was asked the other day about like, um, you know, gosh, anyone can just have them this, this, and this, well, I talked to some people downstate, and there's a reason why they put the numbers in it, it makes a lot of sense. It pretty much without having to cherry pick or pick on anyone, it just takes people right out of the equation. My lot's two hundred feet deep, fifty feet wide, I'm fifty-seven feet isolation distance from my well to the septic. If you'd say, if we say, even the way the township drafted it at twenty-five feet, where's my chicken coop gonna go?
Yeah.
And if, you can't even go this far inside the middle of the property, cause I still won't make twenty-five feet to each side, so people like me, I have one neighbor, that's it. I can't have chickens, cause I can't meet the isolation distance. So there's a reason why these numbers exist, because of the way a lot of parcels are in these communities, that it pretty much, unfortunately, it takes, eighty percent of the people right out of the equation.
Yeah, I'm by a big creek, so yeah, that'd be a point.
Yeah, there you go, right, yep. So you do it that way, when they put these caveats in, it's gonna be, I mean, I don't know.
Are you getting that many people that really wanna put in chicken coops?
Um, I'd say that with the egg prices and everything else, and it may be a fad for some people, but I think the interest is there even if it's for one season. And I love the idea of sustainability, but I can't think of myself, I have to think about the community as a whole, which when we get to the public hearing will say a lot, when we get to that point, see what people think. Cause I certainly don't dislike the idea, I just think that, yeah, I think it's.
Not for you, but.
Oh, no, I want chickens, I want chickens, I want guinea hens, but I'm not, I can't have them.
Okay.
I'll never get, I'll never have the space, cause I can't even, um, if we did put something that had to do with water, because, no matter what, there's gonna be naysayers out there, if you have chicken poop and you get a heavy rain, next thing you know, here I can, I can just hear someone.
I think we ought to add that into our equation.
Just something to think about.
I, I'm in agreement with that, with, with putting a little more restrictions on it, as far as, uh, that goes.
Yeah, and I know how you guys feel, I've thought about this a lot, um, you know, a lot of people have come to me and said, well, if you're gonna allow chickens, just allow them, it doesn't have to be that complicated. Here's the problem, it is complicated stuff.
Yeah, it is.
Because you can't please everyone, you, you don't wanna please everyone, but you also wanna make it fair and reasonable, so it's not so, like overwhelming, which honestly, I don't have a problem with not issuing permits, for one reason and one reason only. Who's gonna enforce it? Is there anyone?
Your neighbor.
Your, well, true, yeah.
Your neighbor will complain.
Yep.
I'm sure the neighbor will look up the ordinances.
We have an ordinance officer.
Ooh.
Yeah. But what does that mean though, what if someone just doesn't like chickens, but they're doing everything?
If they're doing everything by the book, then there's no complaints.
Well, there's nothing we'll do, there's just gonna be plenty of complaints.
Well, that's up to, like you say, the ordinance officer then.
Yeah.
If you, if you don't mind me adding, the, uh, the ordinance department right now is running on, uh, uh, no, no filled out complaint, no signature, no complaint. So, if somebody's complaining in order to deal with it, they would have to turn in a complaint, and then we'll deal with it. But as far as general complaining, we're trying to move away from that.
Yeah. How do you guys feel about this, um, they have this in Richfield, I noticed it before, but I just renoticed it, I guess. Um, it's not a yearly thing, it's like a one and done, and like they come and check every five years. Get your permit, put your coop up, it's good for so many years. I mean, I don't want people to have to get a new permit every freaking year just for chickens, not really. But.
No.
If we're concerned about the idea, because let's face it, if, if you have a neighbor who's gonna complain, they're gonna complain in the first month. Whether it's, you know, here, there, five years, so. So that's something to think about, I guess.
That's something.
Yeah.
But we say properly disposable chicken waste, what do we mean, how are we gonna, how are they gonna dispose it?
I put that down too, how.
It's kinda wide open.
Further definition needed.
Buried in the ground. What's properly disposing of it?
Good question. You know what I wish, I wish there were a way, but I don't know this yet, this would be something to ask, I wish we'd get to the compost site. Cause once all that nitrogen were mixed in with the breakdown of other materials, it'd be great fertilizer.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, the compost site.
Yeah, I mean, if there were a way to, then you, people have to get it there, and will people do that? Otherwise, I guess for the most part, they're just gonna be bagging it and put it in the trash. And you can't police that, I'm not going around to check.
No.
But you can see if they, uh, you know, haven't disposed of any, um, chicken poop, I mean, if the, if it gets really bad.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then, and tha- and that's where, you know, I, how do you, how does the ordinance officer figure out if it's gotten bad?
Yeah, one good thing, it's already been included before, in item C, um, and this will be the one, if anything, that people would complain about, that the animals possessed do not become excessively noisy, excessively odorous, dangerous, or in any way disrupted to the character of the area in which are they are possessed.
Yeah, how do you, you know.
Yep. I mean, it's, I mean, I mean, it's in there, at least, at least we can say it's in there to say, listen, you have to take care of the waste, you just have to. If you don't, and you get so many complaints, that's it, you're done, gotta take, gotta get rid of them, so. I don't know. Do either of you want chickens?
Yeah.
There's no way to police it.
Right, right. All right, well, we can, um, any more discussion on that, cause we're gonna go on to, um,
Well.
No, I'm gonna go to the other items on here.
Getting back to what Fred originally said was, uh, having the, getting rid of the optional, covered fence on, on the top.
That's what I said, put a covered fence.
Yeah.
Don't say optional, get rid of that.
I, I, I would be in agreement with that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Because that brings up one of the other items too, if we go to item seven, obviously, I think everyone has this, every municipality, roosters are not allowed. That's it, straight up, everyone does it, the noise, yeah, we're good there.
Oh, roosters.
Are we in agreement in that?
Yes.
Yes.
Roosters.
Even in this, the, his proposal to the state says no roosters.
Yep. So what about number eight, which brings me to, uh, to the point about having a covered enclosure, because, I mean, it's gonna draw animals in. It does, let's face it, fox, coyote, whatever, it could draw them in. No person shall slaughter any chickens within public sight. Thoughts?
How, how are they gonna slaughter them? Then, I, I, I don't know, you know?
Well, my granddad had two hundred and fifty acres, we just took him out back and chopped the head off, we were good. I personally have an issue with slaughtering in our one residential districts, but for one reason only, um, that, and I understand within public sight, I guess you'd have to go to the back of the property, you could do it in your garage, but you've gotta have the pot of boiling water and whatnot to dunk them, to pull the feathers and everything else off. I don't like the idea of any excess blood at all that could draw in predators. I take care, I have spent more money than I'd ever be able to count in a lifetime on taking care of stray animals, feral cats, this, that, whatever. I do not wanna see them get eaten alive because someone's butchering their chickens at some point in time in an R one residential district, and we have children around, I don't know, I don't like it, that's me. And there are options, if the hens are too old and they get done laying eggs.
Chickens have to be put down, so how?
Well, no, that's my point, there are people in the area right now.
How are we doing?
They have over two acres, they can slaughter them. There's people there, you can, you know, there's Amish communities that'll take them, give them a chicken for everyone you slaughter, otherwise, I mean, there's a way, but see, that's something that should be the responsibility, if it's in the ordinance on the homeowner, I don't think a township should have to police that. If the point in time comes that you don't want them anymore, you will dispose of them in the proper way. Whether it's take them to, you know, we have a gentleman named Scotty come there, he owns twenty-five acres out here, he has his chickens right now, and that's perfectly acceptable, he slaughters so many a year. Take them to him, cut him a deal, I don't know, I mean, there's a, there's a way to do it, there's always people around these rural districts who will take unwanted chickens, and slaughter them, but when I'm thinking of our one residential districts, even though there's a lot of rural area in our one, but there's a lot of homes that are really close to each other in our one, and out of sight, well, who determines that? The head comes off, and here comes the school bus, and the kids see it because they thought they were out of sight?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. That's me.
That's one to think about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I know that's a tough one, cause like, what are you doing, cause for some people, it probably will be a fad, they're gonna keep chickens for so long.
Well, yeah, right.
Yep.
Well, some people are going to wanna slaughter their own chickens and.
Right.
Have a, have a chicken dinner.
Yep.
But, but I, but I don't know about, yeah, I, I'm thinking that, probably shouldn't allow the slaughtering of them in, our one area.
I mean, I look at this, but there's probably a reason why other townships put in there, there's no slaughtering within these districts.
Not dispose of chickens properly, but how?
Yeah, once again, if that's in the ordinance, it's not for me to decide that.
Right.
If we allow them, then you need to be, not you, but they, they, you need to be responsible and know how to take care of and how to dispose them if and when that time comes, for sure. Cause it's our job to make sure, you know, I think like, you know, the community's safe, and this is done the right way, and this is done the right way, but I don't think it's any government's job.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to say how to dispose of them.
Right.
But I think we can put something in there to say, you're not allowed to slaughter.
Cannot dispose of them on your property.
And maybe a caveat to your point should be put in there, and like, you know, item eleven or whatever, that at some point in time, when the homeowner chooses to no longer, keep their backyard chickens, they must dispose of them, remove them in a proper manner according with laws or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, they might sell the house and the new people won't want the chickens.
Right, right, wait, you forgot your chickens.
Right.
Then what? Okay, that's something to think about for sure.
Something else to think about.
Yep. Okay, no chickens should be, this is number nine, no chickens shall be kept on parcels with more than one dwelling.
Well, I, I, I guess I can agree with that, I mean, that would be saying, well, condominiums or.
Yeah.
Things like that, that.
Right.
Where they have multiple dwellings.
Right. So basically, I'd like to refine it that, I don't like it just saying more than one dwelling because, what if somebody combined lots, if something were happening, there are two family members living on a, you know, on a parcel, because the lots got combined through the family, I think what we should include is PUDs, planned unit developments, cannot have them. That's what you're talking about with condos, apartments, or anything else, planned unit developments, right there.
Well, you can't have two dwellings on one lot.
Well, we're gonna be discussing that soon at the ZBA.
My neighbor did.
Yeah, that's, well, that's my point.
He did.
There are.
They let him do it, he's got two houses on.
And here's how you do it, so like my neighbor up the road, um, his, his lot's not even technically, they're not even touching, but they gave him a variance and replotted the road, so that thirty-one or thirty-two feet, whatever it is, they eventually touch, one's a barn dominium, well, that's not a house. And one's the residence, so he does have two dwellings. And that's how they're getting around a lot.
Neighbor has two dwellings.
Yep. Yep. But, we take, if we put PUDs in there, we take planned unit developments, condos, apartments, um, uh, you know, well, even, um, uh, the trailer parks, that's a planned unit development, it takes them right out of the equation. Cause what if, what if a couple people did live on, you know, um, you know, ten acres or something like that, and it did have, they happened to have two houses? I mean, if I'm gonna allow chickens, like in an R one residential district, but you have two dwellings and you can't have them, that doesn't even make any sense.
Well, if you have two dwellings on one lot, you don't, uh, what happens if one, are you saying that they're two different owners, for sure?
Oh, no, to me, and if there's two different owners, if something, let's say, and I, I'm gonna, well, yeah, that gets really complicated, but I guess what I'm looking at is like, if, mom and dad live here, and for some reason, there's a barn dominium on the same parcel, and that's a dwelling in, uh, a son and his new wife live here. That's two dwellings, maybe same ownership, maybe or not, I don't know, there just has to be, I think, something, it just wouldn't make sense to me to like, let chickens down the road from me when the houses are just those little tiny lots, but not someone else's, you know. Something to think about, which is why PUDs cover it, because that's not a planned unit development, just because you have two, and Richfield, by the way, does that too, um, they, uh, allow provisions shall apply to R one, single family residential districts, and R two, single family, two family residential districts. But if it's two family.
But we don't have that in our, we don't have that.
R twos, yeah, we do. I just don't know where, it's on the map in the back, I believe so, but either way.
Okay.
Um, I believe we do, and maybe I could be wrong, cause I know it's, there's, there's something coming up with the ZBA soon to, to address that, um. I mean, it would be nothing more too than if it's a two family residential, I mean, you just gotta get permission from both homeowners, I mean, it's that simple to me. I mean, if we're gonna allow permission for some of these other things in here, I don't know. Or not at all, it's up to you guys. More to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then obviously number ten, the disposing of the chicken waste properly, so.
Yeah, we went through that.
Yep, we already went through that. So, looking at it, um, yeah, I mean, it's basically fine, it's just, it needs some tweaking, um, yep, fines, I mean, I don't know, I think the fines are fine, I mean, rules, the rules are there for a reason.
Yeah, and I don't think that we need to look at that at all.
No. And I would assume anyone who's gonna keep them, what I would hope would be, you know, wise enough to like, and smart enough to take care of them properly, if not, I guess dinner's on them, don't they? I guess dinner's on them, don't they? Alright. Let me see if there was anything else.
So are you gonna write this up and then at our next meeting on the, whenever it is?
Twenty-six, twenty-eight.
The twenty-eighth, we can have further discussion and
Yeah, what I'd like is for everyone to kinda come up with some
Yeah.
you know, wording on things we just discussed. In some places, probably because they're really sort of, like in Traverse City, um, they don't have, they have the twenty-five feet, which is pretty standard, but, um, theirs is, let's see, they're down to four hands, we should discuss that, um. Yep, and they do have it too, that no chickens shall be kept on parcels with more than one dwelling, but I think that's just, I mean, that'll be up to us, I guess. We'll just decide. Traverse City's a little different than Lyon Township, so. Yeah, so I think if we all come, put our heads together and all come up with some different, um, formats of what we'd like to see moving forward.
But
It's not part of the chicken, but we have the minimum fine. Okay, who, what's the maximum? If you're gonna find somebody, what, that's minimum, or should we just say, this is the, I mean, that's who would then say, what's the maximum fine? You know, the minimum fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you know what? That's a good question. I'll have to look at it, because I thought after so many offenses that you would lose your right to have them anyway.
Well, I see, you know, after so many offenses. But it's minimum fine. Does somebody set a maximum or?
Right.
You know? Or you just say, this is the fine?
You should probably have just, this is the fine. I don't know why they had that, uh.
I'm just saying, maybe minimum shouldn't be in there. Just after I read it, I was like
Yeah.
Be a little change.
Do you see on your draft, um, where it actually says, maybe I'm just not reading it right during this?
What?
Where it actually states, um, how many infractions before you lose your right to have them? I don't see it.
I don't, I don't either, but
And that would be something else.
Every day you can fine them another four hundred dollars.
Well, that's why I think it's absurd to go to that point. I think after, if someone has a third offense, and I'm talking about a viable offense, I mean, we're talking, it can be proven, it's videotaped, it's whatever, someone, ordinance officer goes out there, smells the problem, whatever it is. Then after three offenses, to me, you're done. I'm not gonna keep on fining you. You're just gonna get rid of them, and the coupon, you're gonna dispose of it on your dime.
Right. And I think that, well, what I'm, the reason I brought it up, it applies to everything
Yeah.
on this ordinance.
Instead of what, just the amendment? What do you mean?
Yeah, that's, the, the fine is on everything.
It's on anything after, you know, it's on
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's on anything that you might be
Like in here, if it had, if you had one of these so-called wild animals, that, that's, that's everything's on there, yeah.
Wild animals or whatever.
Well, I know if anyone has an elephant up here, I'm not gonna wait for the fourth offense, we're gonna make them get rid of it.
I just read it, it just
Yeah.
Bringing it up.
Yep.
Just explained a little bit better, maybe.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and you guys, obviously, we can just decide where we wanna go with it. It says, fourth or subsequent offense. Well, who would allow someone to have four, five, six offenses? By that time, I'm done with you.
Yeah.
As a township, you, you're not having any more chickens, or wild animals, or whatever else is on here. Okay.
Oh, you play baseball, three strikes, you're out.
That, exactly, I said, third offense, done. It's a
Third offense.
Yep, okay.
Obviously, you're not listening to anybody.
I agree, yeah, yep. Especially within that same window, that three-year period or whatever it is.
Okay.
Alright, so we all agree, we're gonna work on some wording for some of these, and we're gonna come together again and, and work on it from there. Alright, sounds good. Anything else on that item? Anything else on item number two with the animal ordinance?
No, I don't have anything else.
Nope.
Alright. On the next, on the other item is, um, number three. Discuss the possibly amending the Planning Commission Ordinance Fifty-Five concerning length of term and staggering them. And you know what? I apologize, it's in my notes here somewhere. So Michigan law, I understand where this is coming from, that there is a caveat in the law about how appointees, planning commission members. Now, Dan, I think you're aware of this, maybe because you've been on the planning commission, how they're staggered. Well, I don't have it with me this evening, I apologize. There is, um, in state statute, how so many positions have to be staggered, like every three, so basically, one person every year is up, their appointment's up. And I apologize for not having that with me, and if I do, it's in all these notes. Or it's probably right here on my phone, actually. But, um, yeah, what do you guys think about that? Like, I mean, pretty much, if, if that's in the statute, and I'm all about statutes, I say we follow that, cause it talks about if you have five members, if you have seven, or if you have the nine, or whatever, and how you stagger them. By the way, and no special treatment whatsoever, my, my position cannot get staggered, because I was already elected to the board. So it'd be the other four board members would be staggered in such a way that every person's, um, appointment comes up every year for reappointment. So then, so by the time you go through, it'd be like every third, fourth year.
I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. And that way, you also, you're not getting everybody leaving at the exact same time.
Right, right, it's, yep.
Which we almost got here.
Which, yeah, I don't know.
And people can quit at pretty much any time too, I mean
Yes, they can resign, yep.
Can resign.
Yep. But state law does say, even if someone resigns, if it's accepted, they must stay on the commission until that position's filled. So. Alright, so for right now, I'm gonna make, I just made a note to myself, I'm gonna pull that state statute and get some more clarification, and that'll be another thing. I'll make a copy for you guys, so we can fully understand how we're gonna stagger them. Um, but it adds something we'd all be, I'm certainly open for it. I like that, just like you said, Dan. I love the idea that
I mean, it's
It's not a wash all at once.
Yeah. That's the way our church operates with their
Yeah.
boards.
Yep. Alright, item number four, um, we're gonna discuss the organization of research for grant writing. And I'm not really sure sending it back what that has to do with, um.
I don't have anything to do with planning commission, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, that's right.
I have to apologize in so much as I put that agenda together, but what it's referring to is that the board wants the planning commission to get really good at writing grants. I put money in the budget to bring people in to show you how. We got a couple offers from some other people. If all five of you would hear, were here, it might come down to who might prefer to look at what or something, but there's only three of you.
Yep.
And we will be by the time you have your next meeting, I'll probably have more information on, on uh, tomorrow, I'm meeting a guy in Ross Common, who's definitely one of the people who would come in and help. And there's another guy kinda on the docket. So if you wanna just table it for now, uh, you know, there's really no way to divide the work between three people, when we don't really even know what the work is yet. But you guys can do, I mean, that's why it's there.
Yeah. Yep.
Certainly your choice to talk about more, or whatever you want, but we need to get good at getting money from every, in every way that we can.
So if I may ask, um, does this have to do more with items that would be, um, as a concern to the planning commission, and they would be grant writing for that? Or would the planning commission, or any part thereof, be writing grants for the township as a whole, outside of the duties of the planning commission?
The board is asking the planning commission to write grants.
Okay. As, as a generalization, whether it's water quality studies, a planned unit development, whatever.
As a lot of things for the planning commission, we don't have the time to do this, nor necessarily the expertise and time put together.
Okay. Alright. Um, this point, I mean
So rather than forming a committee of some sort of, that would be of people from the community, an ad hoc committee, to write grants, you're, you're saying that you would like to have, or you would like to commission the planning commission to do that?
Yes, and train you accordingly.
To those interested, of course. You don't have to. Thoughts, anyone on that? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take in it, I think. I think, I like doing research, I love.
If you
Yeah.
I love doing research, but I've never written a grant before.
No, I haven't either. I've only participated in kind of outside looking in, so I mean, yeah, and that's why if they offer the training, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, that's kind of
If I might say one more thing, the, uh, the previous board, township board, had no grant writing going on whatsoever. I think that is just crazy. So, uh, Ron has done that, I think has been involved in grant writing in the past. But we wanna flip that completely. There's no more American Rescue Act money.
Yep.
There's no more free money other than getting good at writing grants. So even for the Park and Recs Committee, we're gonna do the same thing there. There may be a grant writing committee before it's over. But primarily, the planning commission, one of the things you can do for the township board is the stuff we don't have the time to do. Certainly not mandatory, but that's what we're asking.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, so any more discussion on that item?
No.
I don't think so at this point in time. I don't even think we have to table it either. We'll just, we've talked about it, that's fine. Um, number five, suggested agenda additions by the planner. Well, I guess I should've done that at the beginning, if there were any additions.
No.
Alright, um, any additions by anyone?
I'm sorry?
Any additions? I do understand that at some point in time. Um, we are gonna, uh, look at the, uh, master plan. It's been a long time since that, that's been updated.
I know there's a master plan.
Yeah, it's been a long time since it's been updated.
Here's the master plan.
Yep.
You do have it?
Two thousand, two, two thousand twenty.
Twenty-two, right.
Here's the entire zoning ordinance. We can get you copies of that. Here's this. Yeah, but for right now, I think, um, this is a, this is a good start, um.
Are we going to, uh, eventually get into short-term rental stuff?
Absolutely, yeah, that's coming, yeah.
And also septic ordinance and that, because those two things were shot down.
Yep.
I mean, we, we passed ordinances.
Yes.
I shouldn't say we, the board, the previous board passed those two ordinances. And then, and then the, the board rescinded those, or I'm not sure exactly what the
Repealed.
Repealed them.
So are we gonna have to work on new plans for?
Yeah, more than likely, the short-term rental ordinance that'll be coming down the pipe, um, definitely will, um, come through us at some point. Um, my big question is right now, and I just can't seem to get a clear, concise answer from anyone, I feel like, so I'm still doing research, is that the whole idea of any kind of septic ordinance, point of sale, time of transfer, whether its home's not on record or otherwise, is that even Garrish Township is doing this too. They keep on talking how they're going to push it through the planning commission. Here's my problem with that. And I've talked to MTA, Michigan Township Association, about this too, and there is a difference. If they put it under a police power ordinance, Act two forty-six of nineteen forty-five, there's absolutely no reason for a hearing. There is absolutely no reason for anything except the will of the board. So I, I don't, and I've spoken to Garrish once about this, and I don't understand, and we'll have to make the same decision. The only time it comes to the plan, now you can't, and trust me, it can come to the planning commission, but it doesn't serve any purpose. A septic ordinance isn't zoning.
Yeah.
And if it's not zoning, we shouldn't be involved.
Unless you're saying that it, the septic ordinance is only for our, let's say, R one, or something like that. Doesn't that then become a planning commission?
Mm-hmm, yep, then it does.
Make it township-wide, then it, then it's not.
Cause one thing's for certain, that zoning ordinances must be uniform in nature, because you're actually zoning districts. So you can't just pick out and say, well, we're gonna take just this chunk of homes in this R one area and have them do this. You don't even need others to be
Or you could go all R one, though.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you can't say a little bit of, I mean
Right.
split R one in half.
Right, it's like, this half does this, this half does it, yep.
Yeah.
And then if it's a township-wide ordinance under police power ordinances, um
Then it's not even the planning
It's not even planning commission. But here, here's where we get a little confusion on my part as well, is that and no disrespect whatsoever, just facts, with the last board requiring, um, N two forty-five high-performance tanks in only the SAD, I still will say to this day, and it's kind of been confirmed, but I'm not gonna go there, that was zoning. And they never did it properly. You literally took a chunk of homes within R one residential districts and said, those homes must put in a high, a high-performance tank, but it wasn't zoning. Well, wait a second. You know?
Yeah, that was
Zoning is land use, and police power is activities on the land, and there's a big difference there, so yeah, so I think we'll be, definitely, I would say the short-term run is gonna be coming our way. Septic ordinance, I, you know, I'd like to get some clarification one of these days from Garrish Township as well, is why are they bringing it to their planning commission? Yeah, when it's not a zoning issue. If you're just gonna say the whole township has to have, follow a septic ordinance, that's police power. That's not zoning, so. It's gonna, but yes, we got, there's some things we'll definitely be working on. Huh?
Really not zoning.
Exactly, right, yeah. Yep. So, we'll definitely be working on that. Alright, gentlemen, anything else this evening?
No.
I don't believe so, no. So I make a motion that we adjourn?
Alright, six, ten PM?
Yeah, give me a little public comment here.
Oh, you know, I forgot about that, yes, okay. I guess, we'll open it up to public comment.
Only in so much as that I could help explain a couple things that
I thought this wasn't a public debate.
No.
Public is always invited.
And it didn't really come up, or if it did, I was half asleep back there. Uh, Fred Cowperham. Fred Cowperham had been working on the master plan, and we talked for a couple hours on it. And he is absolutely right, that all of the math and the figures in it is outdated.
Oh, yeah.
So he was kinda leaning towards, that might be one of the first things the planning commission could go after. Certainly, the planning commission, yes, this board wants the planning commission to figure out how to update it.
Yep.
In regards to the septic ordinance, uh, I've spent a lot of time talking to the health department. We're gonna do a point of sale, you're somewhat aware of this.
Yep.
Pretty much cleared the board with them on where we're going, so we're gonna do a point of sale, time of transfer as a, as the first building block, and then start adding to it.
Which is not zoning.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. We already asked the lakefront people to try and get an inspection done within two years, but that's a ask. We weren't demanding it.
I saw that.
Right, the point of sale, time of transfer applies to any sale then in the township. And I'll talk about it later tonight, I got a lot of details on that, but the, uh, then from there, we would move to the rest of the township, and what do we wanna do with the rest of the township in regards to not having a point of sale or a time of transfer. And we got some ideas. It's, uh, first, it's point of sale, time of transfer, and that's gonna come pretty quick. I think I got, um, that I talked to them enough to where they are convinced that I am not a rifle-toting maniac. And that, and that, uh, basically, we're gonna adopt something they have already approved elsewhere, almost to the word. So they would have no reason to doubt it. In fact, they're kinda saying, you got a little leeway, you can do what you want. So, they would have no reason to doubt it, in fact, they're kind of saying, you got a little leeway, you can do what you want. So, in regards to that, that's where it's gonna start.
Okay, um, when you're doing that point of sale, time of transfer, is there any way you could add in something about, uh, if you rent a place out for more than X number of weeks of the year, that, uh, you have to do it?
I think in the short-term rental plan, it's gonna end up, I think, only me speaking, that you would have to get a, a good septic inspection initially, have one on hand to get a permit, and then probably every two years.
Yeah.
Just to keep up with the rental stuff.
Okay, so you do plan on going forward with a short-term rental?
That is also much closer than you think, based on last week. And that would, like you said, that would go to you guys.
Yep.
And we're looking at adopting a version from a township, and adding some things from a couple other townships that we like. And then it goes to you guys, and he explained the process pretty thoroughly from there.
That works.
Yeah, I just, mainly was, uh, um, Mr. Cowper was right about that, so if nothing else, if you're looking at, what are we gonna do next?
I agree.
At least the math and the master plan.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's referencing old population, I mean, we, there was a census in twenty twenty, and this is referencing.
And you know, and your point about septic, and we've talked about this down, down the road, about adding this stuff, like, I've always said, like, I want people to be responsible, it is not my job, I don't, I didn't come up here to like, knock on doors and say, you're doing this, or, you know, not with official township or stuff or not, I just don't want that to have to be, I want people to be, if they have to be forced to be responsible, so be it. But at the end of the day, with the nature of the climate that has been up here for the last four and a half years of my involvement, that homes that are not on record for septics, mine was not, it was seventy years old, and granted, I have an entirely new system now, that is on the homeowner, for them, if anything, it should be on record. I'm not saying you have to replace it right then, I'm not saying you have, but get it on record, so the health department, health department, we already know, will have their entire system digitized by midsummer. All the inspections that were from here and other areas, they had, ran into a snafu, from what I understand, right, they said, I think it's midsummer?
I, they, uh, got the latest and the greatest yesterday. They started, for every, every county under their supervision, they started right here.
Nice.
Okay, wow, nice.
Oh, okay.
The, the fetch system that they, what they're calling it, it's probably not gonna be up and running, but it would allow you to, as a resident even, go in there and put an address in, and it's gonna show you whether there's something on record for that, for that property. Garrish is working on a similar thing, where once you can access that, you can send a letter to those people and say, you don't have anything on file, and then it comes down to, are you gonna force them to do something in six months? Or are you gonna give them three and a half years, you know, then it comes down to some variables. And talking with him yesterday, 'cause it was looking like, if we didn't do exactly what they wanted, we could not get into the fetch system, now they're, they're saying, whatever we do, if it's less than those super intrusive inspections, it would still probably get into the system.
The tiered level that Nick Sergeant had.
I would have read all my information from them.
Yeah, there's some is there, but they got hacked, and they're, they're so, they're just gun-shy, they don't wanna do anything until they got everything locked down. It can't be screwed up, but the, um, yeah, some information is there. Originally, when we talked to three-tier, they said, sure.
Yep.
Okay, now it was like, eh, 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 okay. Talked to him again, and it's looking like.
Two tiers?
Well, yeah, actually, that's exactly what it might come down to being, is, because our goal, we had talked, within a couple of years, to have eighty-five to ninety-five percent of the systems in this township on record. And by being on record, if they had, when they were checked, if they had a fail, that had to get corrected. So, all of the fine points about, are you gonna make it come up to code, even when it's not failing, those are things we have to work out. But it's going in the right direction now, certainly don't wanna fight the health department. The key with that point of sale, time of transfer, it's very intrusive, but, you have motivated people, and money is on the table, so if you wrap it into the fact that it's the owner's duty, that's, that's solvable, I think you can do that, without a whole lot of people getting upset other than realtors.
Yep.
But when you start graduating into the other stuff, eh, it gets a little more difficult, but we'll, we'll get there, we've talked about it a lot already. I'll shut up for a while.
No, that's okay, yeah, and to that point, real quick, there is a, and I'm still gonna get clarification of this, I don't know where it's gonna come from, the state, um, uh, who knows, maybe I'll just make a trip to Lansing, go to the, uh, state attorney general's office, make an appointment or something, someone I know there, but anyway, I've always had a problem, there's a caveat in the health code in nineteen seventy-eight, when it was act enacted, and it's, it's seven hundred pages long, and I've read most of it, but it's very involved. There's a caveat in there that says, after jurisdictional authority was taken away from townships, as far as septics and everything else, and given to the health department on, in the public act, um, there's a section that, that all, uh, what's it called, ordinances by a local health department supersede any township ordinance, and I've always had a problem with that, because I think, for me, it comes down to, we have to be very careful that, like, well, so, what, someone's gonna tell you have to upgrade your entire system to some whatever other system? Well, no, because if under that Act of nineteen seventy-eight, if the state gave the health department permission to enact those rules and laws, and they did, and that's their minimum requirement, like I put in my concrete tank, I'm sorry, to me, and I'll always say, and I was ready for a lawsuit anyway before I got elected, that you have now broken the law by saying, I have to do something more, when the law says that ordinances of a local health department supersede local ordinances, override, take place, whichever way you wanna word it. So, I think it's very, you know, you have to be very careful to say, okay, well, we're gonna force you to do this, this, and this, no, we're not, I don't wanna go there. 'Cause I think it opens it up to lawsuits.
Yeah.
But that's me, I want it to be done the right way, but it's.
That was my comment, I wanna go back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But at the end of the day, you know what, Dan, everyone knows, if the state would get off their butts and pass a universe, uniform code.
Is it still gonna be every three years? Have to, uh, do it clean up?
Oh, pump pods? It was every five.
So, that'd be every five.
And that, there's a whole lot of.
There's a whole lot, yeah.
That's another, who's gonna.
If you don't use it, you know, if you're seasonal, every five years is too much.
I have a brand-new fifteen-hundred gallon tank, I'm one person, nobody ever visits me, like, I need mine done every five years, are you kidding me?
Everybody doesn't live up there.
No, you're right, yeah.
There's another one I found where it's, they just turn it over to the, to the septic guy, and, and we have a version of that, called a tank check. They look in it, and they, and if the water flow is okay, and they stick a pipe in there, they can tell by the dimensions of the tank, how much sludge should be in there, and then you're at a point where you gotta pump it. Uh, I've talked with Nick a lot, I mean, some people, twenty years, if you're only using it three weeks in the summer. Other people, every three years, if you're using it a lot, there's a lot of people. But certainly, discussion, discussion, discussion.
And I've had that in my old systems, it was fifty, it was fifty dollars, not five hundred. So. Alright. Thank you, Mr. Bertrand.
Are we adjourned?
Probably.
Alright, six-twenty-one P.M., I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting at six-twenty-one P.M.
Make that motion.
Second?
I second.
And all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion adjourned.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
We'll be here on.